Good afternoon. Getting ready to start the agenda review session of the meeting. We have ordinances on second reading. Ordinance 04145, ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, vehicles and traffic post-stops. Ordinance 403, is an ordinance to amend the management salary ordinance, going 12/2014. Ordinance 404, amend the PPA salary ordinance, 2014 to 2017. Ordinance on first reading. We have ordinance 04145, ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank. Ordinance 406, and ordinance to authorize third-party favorable disbursement. Resolution. We have resolution 041444, approve agenda amendment. Resolution 405, approve payable through 2014 to 411114. Resolution 446, authorize approval for refund tax sales certificates. Resolution 447, City of New Brunswick, 2014 municipal budget introduction, Wednesday, April 16, 2014, the public even on 11th, 2014. Resolution 448, authorized release of company machine for product distribution office. This is 4813, on D Capital Information Tech Solutions, doing business at Rico USA, for one D uniform PR system not to exceed 163.64 per month, beginning May 1st, 2014, and ending on April 3rd, 2018. This is a state contract A-82709. Resolution 449, approve amendment of resolution 051378 from municipal court. The reason is to pay for two additional months of plot reserve, March 2014 and April 2014, for Rico USA, per operating capital, not to exceed 350.40 cents. Approval of this change order will now constitute a increase of 20% or more of the amount of the regional contract. Resolution 450, approve of order contract with Wiscay, Nascapose contractors, for ILS E&amp;K, not to exceed 1400, with Chick's Town Nursery, not to exceed $10,003, with Barbado Nursery Corporation, not to exceed 8,510. This is to furnish and deliver trees for spring tree planting program. Resolution 451, approve of harvest raffle merchandise at Boyd Park, North 18 North, for B's Foundation on September 28, 2014. Resolution 452, approve request for use of city property requested by T-Sex New Life Morning Club. The location is Google Park and Pavilion for Healthy Run, on Saturday, June 21st, 2014, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Resolution 453, approve request for use of city property requested by United Methodist Church of New Brunswick. The location is Google Park and Pavilion. This is for a church picnic on July 20th, 2014, from 10:00 a.m. to 14:00 a.m. Resolution 454, approve request for use of city property requested by Christian Church of Living God. The location is War Memorial Park, religious service and food distribution for the meeting, on Saturday, August 16th, 2014, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:30, with a rain date on Saturday, August 23rd, 2014. Resolution 455, approve request for use of city property requested by the New Brunswick Recreation Department and City League of Greater New Brunswick. The location is Recreation Park for the Animal Health Fair and Food and Challenge, on Saturday, May 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Resolution 456, approve request for use of city sidewalk requested by the State Theater, the sidewalk in front of Crystal First Restaurant, for the State Theater's town on Saturday, May 17th, 2014, from 6:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Resolution 457, approve request for use of city property requested by Ibece Cristiano Pecan Costal. The location is War Memorial Park for Verdi's Gallery, Saturday, June 14th, 2014, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Resolution 458, approve person-to-person transfer of legal license from Revi's Urban Renewal Association to Higher Corporation. Resolution 459, approve amendment of resolution 041309. The reason is to pay outstanding final invoices to DGL, Rastafalas doing business as main population repair for automotive body repairs for the police department, not to exceed 3,000. Approval of this change order will now constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the regional contract. Resolution 460, approve amendment of resolution 021464. The reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of 920.50 to Lawrence Peterman, for Sergeant John Langen, in the matter of Anderson versus the City of New Brunswick, from 3,322 to 4,258.50 cents. Resolution 461, approve amendment of resolution 021467. The reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of 612 to Lawrence Peterman, for Lieutenant Michael Bobarilla, in the matter of Josuvaldo Fernandez, Jorge Lopez Nieves, and Jorge Granados Hoya, versus the City of New Brunswick, from 7,913.50 to 8,525.50 cents. Resolution 462, approve amendment of resolution 041342. The reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of 717 to Lawrence Peterman, for Sergeant Anthony Terzinski, in the matter of Josuvaldo Fernandez, Jorge Lopez Nieves, and Jorge Granados Hoya, versus the City of New Brunswick, from 1,000 to 1,717. Resolution 463, approve payment to Raymond Zaduka for extra services. This is in reference to Cradaville versus the City of New Brunswick, not to exceed 1,200 dollars. This is from front of. Resolution 464, approve request to conduct sidewalk sale and post no parking signs. This is requested by the Presbyterian Church. The location is a sidewalk in front of 100 Livingston Avenue. This is for sidewalk sale to benefit the church on Saturday, June 14th, 2014, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m. Resolution 465, approve emergency temporary appropriations for 2014. Resolution 466, approve amendment of resolution 021410. The reason is to pay legal fees in the amount of 1,147.50 to benefit an outland, for Police Director Anthony Capullo, in the matter of Arthur Anderson versus Anthony Capullo, from 5,975 to 7,055. Resolution 467, approve amendment of resolution 021413. The reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of 1,565 to benefit an outland for Police Officer James Piston, in the matter of Michael Basmore versus the City of New Brunswick, from 22,186 to 22,751. Resolution 468, approve on premise raffle merchandise at Hotel Great. This is for the JBRF International with Jersey Chapter, on May 9th, 2014. Resolution 469, approve of order contract with Ocean Homies for North Street and Commercial Avenue traffic signal relocation, not to exceed 46,745. Resolution 470, approve amendment of resolution 011468. The reason is to pay the final bill in the amount of 662.50 to Golden, Los Chiles, Carlola, Loto, Roya, and Garugo, PC, for Thomas Bonelli versus the City of New Brunswick, from 9,204.98 to 9,867.48. Resolution 471, approve request for use of city property. This is for the sidewalk only, requested by San John's Baptist Church. The location is at Bill Street, Tavernapo Way, Milton Street, and Elijah's Way, for good Friday religious possession on the sidewalk, on Friday, April 18th, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. Resolution 472, authorize tax collector to transfer queries on several tax and utility accounts. Resolution 473, approve amendment of resolution 031468, change order number 1P, with Lavada Inc., for Benson Avenue Farm Museum and Community Center. The amount is 29,638.72, and the approval of this change order will now constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the regional contract. Resolution 474, approve amendment of resolution 041478, change order number 1D, with Witcher Company for Benson Avenue Farm Museum and Community Center. The amount is 14,555. Approval of this change order will now constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the regional contract. Resolution 475, approve amendment of resolution 091361, change order number 2, credit with Lucian's Aim, removal of fuel tank at various locations. The credit is 62,841.12. Resolution 476, approve amendment of resolution 011442, with BRV Evaluation and Consulting Services. For supplemental appraisal services, the amount is 2,715. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more[657.84]
A public safety expert review the best ways for these two departments that coexist in the same community. What's the best way for them to work together? Let's spend that money working on that rather than fighting these court cases and pursuing this. Of course, after the maps were obtained from the city clerk's office, my attorney contacted the city's attorney and said, "This case is pretty much over. We don't, you know, we're done here." And the city fought back and hired an expert and tried very hard to win just for pride. It was throwing good money after bed. It's a mistake. And I'd also ask you that you review the way you're spending money on our attorneys. Of course, there was controversy over the amount of spending on some of these city attorneys earlier this year. And it was said, "Well, they're not going to get that money unless they bill for it." Well, now we're giving them a reason to bill, and that reason is fighting against our own citizens who are just trying to find out information about their government. Instead, maybe these city attorneys could work on looking into the huge pharmaceutical plant that has been alleged to have polluted an entire neighborhood, the air, soil, and water for 70 years. Maybe those city attorneys could spend some time working on that instead of fighting this ridiculous case across the street in the county courthouse. I urge you not to vote for this. Thank you very much for your time.
Anybody else want to talk to the wish to address the council of these specific resolutions? Are we not move the resolutions?
Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Garlotti. Council President Escobar.
At this time, we don't have any clean up information discussion before we go into the focus part of the meeting. I just want to just go into some updates, and I know some of my fellow council members wanted to do some announcements. I just wanted to put an update at the last meeting and previous to that, we had a city resident gave us some information about 145 Joyce Comer Avenue. I just want to say that the city contacted the county, that means what has been placed on the property, and given the chance for the owner on record to rectify the situation of that house. And if that doesn't happen by April 21st, then we will take action actually in the property.
Can I just clarify one thing? A lien has not been put on the property yet. It will be after the cleanup, and you will, of course, authorize the lien by resolution at that time.
12 Brookside, another resident of that, next to that house, came to address, you know, he has some challenges with the house next to 12 Brookside. The house was inspected, and there's some repairs were taking place, the porch ceilings were replaced, there's new porch railings, and there's some other specifications, some other fixes that need to be done, and it will be done soon. I think it's one of the, on the roof, right? One of the times.
I believe there's a couple of ceiling tiles or roofing tiles missing that are, might still cause or contribute to the verb issue, and I understand the inspections office is on top of that and likely to see that resolved quickly.
Then, I just want to encourage everybody here, the next city's hoping, this year again, the next ciclovia is on May 4th from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. I encourage you to come out. Last year, we had an excellent activity, we had over 4,000 residents participate, walking, biking, skating, and doing different activities throughout the route. And this year, we do entry, and the first one is like I said on May 4th, so I encourage you to participate and join us in the ciclovia events that we would be having throughout the year.
And I have saved day cards, if anybody needs those, to back up the announcement about ciclovia. And then the other thing that I wanted to celebrate is that over 5,000 children daily are being fed breakfast after the bell at school. And the New Brunswick Community Food Alliance, along with the school board and the school system, have all put this program together, and it's working really well, and I think it's something, or to do something good, I think we should celebrate it, and I'm very excited to be able to draw attention to that great program. Anybody else?
Yeah, I wanted to, second, you took the words right out of my mouth. On the breakfast after the bell program, because my sons attend New Brunswick Public Schools, and even though my sons do eat before they leave, now they're able to have breakfast before the bell, my sons get a little chunkier, he likes breakfast after the bell also. So I just want to thank those who are responsible for helping us to feed his appetite on a daily basis. Thank you.
Did you want to speak to the Esperanza Neighborhood Request?
Yes.
Okay. They got a request in today from the Esperanza Neighborhood Project. They want to close a portion of Railroad Avenue down on Monday, May 5th, between Handy and Baldwin. The request did not come in in time for it to get to your council agenda tonight, but it's a, I think it's a very low-risk request, the closing of a portion of railroad. We'll do it administratively, assuming the police department does their review, and we'll ask you on May 7th just to approve it non-protocum.
Excellent. I think that we should have a little, what is Esperanza? If people don't know what is Esperanza, probably something a brief synopsis. I know Jamie is here. You want to give just a brief synopsis of what is Esperanza?
So, the Esperanza Neighborhood Project. My name is Jamie Santiago. I'm from New Brunswick tomorrow, a non-profit community in the city. The Esperanza Neighborhood Project is a project to help revitalize a part of the city with boundaries that extend to Livingston Avenue and through French Street, and that French Street Business Corridor. And what we're looking to do is to kind of four-fold, looking at building community through some of the existing partnerships that are there, working with the businesses in the area, and really providing the citizens or residents in that, in that area, just the ability to access services that are available to them, and build community infrastructure to be able to organize a neighborhood association and work with the police department on how to better, I guess, relieve some of the crime issues that may be perceived in the area. And so, it's really a community building exercise right now, as we do a lot of outreach in the Esperanza Neighborhood Project.
And on May 4th, you say now to official launching of the...
Right. So, May 5th, we're going to officially launch the project. So, we have approached the Costa Chica restaurant for the ability to use that parking lot area, which butts up against Railroad Avenue, to launch the project. The project is made available with the privileged grant recipients from the Wells Fargo Regional Foundation to do this project, and so we'll do a launch event on May 5th, starting at 3:30 p.m., and will extend to about 6:30 p.m. or 7:00 p.m.?
Seven.
Seven p.m. And at that event, you know, there'll be free food, so please come out. Costa Chica will do all the cooking. Everything will be free. Partners will be there. Our partners will help us develop the Esperanza project, as well as the representatives from the Wells Fargo Regional Foundation, New Brunswick tomorrow, and the Puerto Rican Action Board, which is a partner of ours on the project and the organizing part.
At this time, any member of the public who wishes to address the council, just come forward to the microphone, state your name and address.
Hello, yes, my name is Dani Amor. I stay at 2, La Vida Joyce Comer Avenue. I just heard you mention something about you'd be closing Railroad Avenue between Handy and Baldwin Street. May I add why?
He just explained, Mr. Daniel, it's for the activity, it's for, and it's on, it's up to railroad between Baldwin and to them, I think it is. A handy, sorry, a handy. That area, where Costa Chica addresses.
How do you exactly do that? I've been working on something for the past two weeks, two weeks now. I hope the city responds quickly before someone gets very, very seriously hurt at the same exact location where you just mentioned, the corner, with the corner of Baldwin and Railroad Avenue, right, right here, where last year, I believe, the city did a procedure there where they did something to the road, where it used to be a guardrail there, where to come around as you're coming from Baldwin leading to Railroad Avenue. I have the pictures here to show you, where they never replaced it. And now, if you look at it, as a car is coming from Baldwin Street, oh my, the police department can make plenty of tickets this way, where people are sneaking through the restaurant there on Handy Street, coming up a one-way street, coming around to Baldwin Street. I've seen it with my own eyes here. I've taken the time, I did over 100 pictures for you to see how many cars come through there both ways, and how someone's going to seriously get hurt. So I hope you respond as soon as possible by replacing the guardrail, the object that was between the parking lot and the railroad due to the job you never finished.
Thank you.
And then, I will get back in line if I have to. And then, back to Joyce Comer Avenue, with 145 Joyce Comer Avenue. It has been about four months now, where you keep saying that you're going to pay someone about to do this, where if you're so concerned that you really want that property cleaned, I do believe you know, I can't think of the owner's name, that's next door, where he does cleaning business. If you, if you really want the property cleaned, how about you just write him a check to do the cleaning, or even me to do the cleaning, not saying for money-wise, because if I have money to do all this, not for the money, but at least guaranteed, you know the property would be cleaned, where that was when you walked, so I'll be walking the door. Oh, mine, by the way, let me mention 145. No, when I was here the last time, you said that you were paying a company, and it would be taken care of.
Mr. Daniel, the city has the person that does that, and they do the cleaning. And the situation has taken a little bit longer, you're right, and we are on it. By April 21st, something should be, there should be done. If by April 21st, the 22nd, the property is still the same, you come back and let us know. But by the 21st, something is going to be done.
And that's what Joyce Comer were, how Joyce Comer to be getting too, so bad, where, I mean, you don't have so many accidents there, believe me, this last one, last week involving my house, that, where, coming from off of Joyce Comer Avenue and Columbus Place, where what? The lady coming through ran into my backyard, coming off of Joyce Comer Avenue, coming, now, imagine how someone's fast, someone's coming from off of Joyce Comer Avenue, to crash into my backyard and take down my whole fence and everything, while the week before that, you had a hit-and-run right in the same area, while crashed. That was about 3:00 in the morning. They were caught in North London due to where someone was able to jump in their car and track the person over in North London to respond. You had an accident on the corner of St. Louis and Joyce Comer. Please, come on, just start doing a roadblock or something, to show these people that you're out here to give out tickets? That's over three or four accidents in one month? Please, take the time and to do it, where you're making it like Joyce Comer is not safe at all. That's like all last week. While the crossing guards, he calls, he called out for Joyce Comer and Comstock Street. She has heart problems. Wow. Oh, the police never sent no one for, not one day. But I did do it out of the goodness of my heart, because like I said, I, well, I did the crossing for the students. People wonder, "Why do I do this stuff?" Because every day, I suffer with pain. I look at it, wow, I hope another person will not have to suffer like I do, because of what? The city's responsibility, or companies, where they're too sorry to take care of their responsibility.
Mr. Daniel, the crossing guard, you said that he did hurt. You crossed it because she was sick, or she wasn't there?
She, she, she was out. She had heart trouble. I came down to, due to where I even have the messages, the numbers on my...
On my table, sir.
That was all last week.
All last week, and there was no...
Monday and Tuesday. Like I said, I could not do it Tuesday, due to where I had to go to the doctors. But to show you how many times I called down to the police department, where if from morning to afternoon to make someone to be there, and no one ever shows up, it's saying like, wow, no one cares, like I said, about Joyce Comer Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel, just for the brief, and I appreciate you, Captain Miller, took the information, and I thank you.
That's where I talked to Officer Sabbath yesterday, where I was saying, wow, he said, by the time he's retired, what a big difference. Now, he said he worked in a different department, but while they made sure they sent him down to speak to me and tell me that the law is that only, you can only have seven police officers dealing with traffic, he said.
I'm not sure about that, but we will look into it, and you give us your five minutes hour, so if you could come back, I will continue to have any more questions, Mr. Daniel. Thank you.
And like I said, here, please take your time. Like I said, with Baldwin Street there, like I said, I have over, what, 100 pictures to show you, where who should take them, to take responsibility and for someone else gets hurt.
Thank you.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville, 6th Ward, New Brunswick. I will start by commending all involved on some of these great things that are going on, like Breakfast After the Bells, Clovia, Esperanza Neighborhood Project, these all sound like really great things that are moving forward, and all involved deserve their due credit. I will now ask a few questions I've asked before, and I'm still looking for answers. We spent 98 days buying, or, you know, using water from the East Brunswick Municipal Water System, and that was millions of gallons per day. Is there even a ballpark figure on what that cost is to taxpayers at this point?
East Brunswick submitted an invoice to us at a value of $1,040,000, which we intend to sit with them and have a discussion with them to understand if that is a fair, if that's fair compensation or not.
Thank you. I've asked before if the city's planning office would please investigate whether the Ride Development LLC or Spring Street Urban Renewal had violated any of the parts of their long-term tax exemption agreement. Did anybody look into that?
And Mr. Patterson, I have to be honest with you, the time's ended. I've asked his question, so if I, we both were right, he wasn't here the last time, so. This was the one that, that we know. But I will follow up.
Thank you. Regarding the Fresh Grocer, is there any update on the status of that business relationship? I know the cafe closed. Is this, are they going to stay? Are they going to pay their rent? How much do they owe?
No new information at this time.
Okay. I wanted to get the council's reaction to the news that Officer Bradford-Gell had been paid on paid leave for 15 months after shooting and killing Barry DeLoach. Public had been led to believe it was less, less time.
I don't have any comment to do on that. That's a personal matter, and I really don't know. That's a personal issue that happened, and I don't have anything to say about that. I'm not at this time.
Okay. I think it's much more than a personnel issue, a man lost his life.
I certainly don't understand that, but the situation, whatever taking, the action we're taking, that's the police personnel matter, so I don't have anything to say at this time.
Okay. Can you tell me, can you tell me what the problem is with Engine 15? People saw it was broken down yesterday in downtown, fire engine?
Mr. Director, I'm here. I have no, I have no knowledge of that.
How many fire engines does the city have?
The director is not here, Mr. Cradaville.
Nobody knows?
So, we'll give us information. It's locked, you know?
We had at least two at each firehouse. That would be six. We have a ladder truck, that would be seven. We have a rescue truck, let's call it eight.
Okay. So, I appreciate finding out what happened to ladder, or Engine 15 as soon as possible. Switch gears now. I wanted to ask, what's being done about pedestrian safety? These two areas that in particular are really dangerous that we focused on is Route 1 and also Livingston Avenue, of course. What's the timeframe on the Livingston Avenue changes? And is anything being done about Route 1?
Yeah, I'm not, Route 1, I don't have anything on this, Mr. Daniel knows, but I will tell you about Livingston Avenue. I know there's some changes that are coming up that the city's working with the county, but even through that process, on April 21st, I have, you know, we're meeting with, we hold the polls and reels and other representatives from the county to see what immediate solutions we could come up in the meantime, because there's going to be a lot of changes there, so we don't want to do instead of, we just want to put something in place prior to the changes coming in city in that area.
Thank you.
So, I have something more to tell you at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Is the plan's moving forward to improve recreation park? The other plans for skate park there, is that, what's the timeframe on that?
Mr. Patterson, I think reported at the last meeting, maybe did, it was another meeting I was out with him, that the design drawings are 95% complete. There's just some additional work to do with respect to the design drawings, and I am sure that we will be putting the matter out to bid sometime this summer. And that, I cannot give you a timeline.
Thank you. Wanted to ask whether Mr. Bella Frante has had his administrative hearing yet? If so, what's, what was the outcome?
It's locked.
Yes, he did have his administrative hearing, and the administrative officer has not issued any decision. That's to today's date.
When should we expect a decision?
I would have the call, then we ask him.
Thank you.
Okay. The other two folks who are suspended, Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Warren, are they...
No, I think, Mr....
No, they're not.
Has not been scheduled yet?
Not scheduled.
No schedule.
Thank you. Okay. I wanted to also ask about the Bristol Myers Squibb matter. There's a mass tort lawsuit moving forward against this company that's called New Brunswick Home since 1905. Serious allegations of polluting the air, the water, the soil. What is the council's position on this? Do you, are you concerned about this? There's a lot of residents that might have been affected.
I remember you mentioned it before, and some of us had the information, some of us didn't have information on it. I know I've been looking at, it's just a lot of specific document, so I haven't had a chance to read the whole thing, so I cannot express any of that this time. Mr. Daniel, do you have some?
There's a first rate lawsuit, representative, lawyers, send lawyers representing the plaintiffs in the matter. I'm sure they're going to do everything they can to affect the recovery on it. I don't know the exact state, so we're not a party for the lawsuit.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did want to ask, does anybody know anything about this woman who's running for school board, Patricia Varela?
I think, this is, I just want to answer, I'm going to answer real quick, because this is not the forum for that question, but you asked me that question the last time, at the end of the council meeting, I told you that I don't know her. So, maybe we should go to the Board of Education meeting and ask the information about her, try to see how we can know who she is.
Okay. Are you aware that her address is 12 Brookside Avenue, the problematic property that was brought up earlier?
No, no, Mr. Cradaville, not yet.
Okay. Well, I just think it's important with an election just a week away, for people to do research on the candidates, and I'm trying, but...
Just by her name?
Not, not much. Just the address is really just about what I know, so hopefully, information will come to light about that. I did want to ask, lastly, is there going to be any progress on making a new memorandum of understanding with Rutgers University Police? I know a lot of folks aren't happy with the current jurisdiction.
I don't have an answer to that question, that that would be something that, that's a police matter, but if there's any changes, I haven't heard of anything. Captain Miller?
I don't have an answer to that.
I'm sorry, well, I didn't hear what the captain...
Captain Miller said that he doesn't have an answer to that, and I haven't heard any.
Okay. Is it, is it correct that the most recent memorandum of understanding is from 2004? Or is there a newer one?
I think to know the answer to that question...
No, I know, that's why.
But anyway, I have no, I have no, I have no knowledge of that.
Does anyone, can someone tell me when the MOU is from?
I don't think that. Captain Miller, do you have the answer to that question?
I don't know, it's not recent. It's in the process. You know, they were still looking at the thing, you know, but I don't have no idea when it, or, you know, they're going to work something out between the director and chief.
That's true. I appreciate it, I want to hear it, it's under, you know, targeting against the...
All right. Well, I hope that something is worked up, because obviously, you know, a 10-year-old agreement that is, is not serving the neighborhood that I live in with the same, you know, level of protection that we used to get, is not going to work. Lastly, I'll just invite you...
Would I be so kind of personal?
Yeah, I just want to close by inviting you this, this Sunday. I know we have a beautiful neighborhood. Hamilton Street, Lewis Street look great, with the trees blossoming. We're going to pick up some later this weekend, Sunday. If anyone wants to help, you can meet at the porch of 144 Hamilton Street, Sunday at noon. That's this coming Sunday. And of course, anyone who wants to get involved in the neighborhood, make it a better place, you can come to the 5th and 6th Ward Neighborhood Association meeting. The last day of the month is April 30th, 7:00 p.m. at the Hungarian Heritage Center, Hungarian Museum, 300 Somerset Street. You're all welcome. We'd love to have you represent the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
To Mel Pippin, 91st Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey. First, I want to address the five-minute rule that you implemented.
I think it's been on the books.
It's been on the books, but you've implemented it recently about a month and a half ago.
Yes.
And prior to you implementing it, you said that someone told you that you allowed people to talk too long. I just like to know which person, who was that that told you that you're allowing community residents to talk too long?
I think it's, you know, it's a different person saying that, you know, that sometimes I let people talk too much, so I would say that I, even here, I have heard it from some of you, I let you talk too much, always that I say. So, to avoid that, and because like I said, and I don't need to repeat what I said the last time, I looked at the, I was aware that it was in the books, you know, that it was the process, but I really felt that I wanted to, it's up to me just to see how it was going, but I think that maybe it was getting out of hand, and it wasn't being productive, in my opinion. So that's why I said, well, I have to go and then follow what is in the books. So that's, I don't, I'm not going to point out fingers at anybody.
Okay. Because my concern was, you know, I mean, you guys went decades with, you know, community residents coming up here addressing their main concerns, and mainly, I think you allowed the people for decades, because, you know, people were saying what you wanted them to hear. But just recently, people started addressing their concerns that weren't going in the favor, and now there's a five-minute rule implemented. And I'm not going to pay attention to it, but I'm not going to listen to it, I'm going to continue with whatever I have to address, and I'm just letting the chips fall where they land. I just, and also, you have a new spokesman for the mayor. I've been going a few, I've been going, I missed a few council meetings, and, you know, I had the pleasure, you know, to meet two astounding people during my absence. I had the pleasure to meet Ms. Sarah Rudolph Collins. I met her about a month ago. She's one of the females that was present in the Birmingham church bombing. Her sister was actually killed, one of the four women killed, and she was a survivor. She bombed, so I had the opportunity to meet her, it was amazing. I also had the opportunity to meet Cornell West, and, you know, I was introduced to him, and what made me ecstatic, because the guy that introduced me told him that, you know, you should look out for his guys, guys, I'm just, you know, private gasses, but, you know. But I'm back, and, you know, I did look at the meetings on the internet, and I noticed that you have a new spokesman for the mayor, Jennifer Bradshaw. And I'd like to know, since she's taken Russell Machado's position, what position does Russell Machado have?
Mr. Martin?
He's the Assistant Business Administrator.
Okay. Who was the Assistant Business Administrator prior to Mr. Machado?
There was a long absence in that position. The last one who served in that capacity was Melanie Ford.
How long ago was that?
Seven, eight years, I think.
So, for seven, eight years, that position wasn't needed, basically?
That's one way of looking at it.
Okay. So, I mean, and situations like this, it seems like that position now created for Russell?
It has been on the, on the project before it has been there.
It's not created. I very much could use the assistance of someone with Russell's experience and skills.
And I believe it was, it was on the focus, it was just that it was based, right?
Yes.
So it was just there.
Okay. And how much is Russell's position now paying?
He is, it was a lateral move. His salary has not changed. I don't know the exact figure, I can certainly get it for you.
The city can definitely afford that, that lateral move.
This year, we can, yes.
All right. Well, it's strange, I want to ask you personally to, at, put somebody into the inspection department for safety reasons, you know, I gave you 10 people to hire, and you said that, I guess, obviously, it wasn't in the budget to have a person there for security. that, I guess, obviously it wasn't in the budget to have a person there for security reasons, you know, when a person, my wife was, you know, threatened, and went through, you know, torment from a person coming in, and you found it not, I guess, in the city's interest to put someone there that would secure the whole department after the neglect of the police department? And now you have a position that was absent for eight years, you finally implemented that?
Mr. Pedman, if you could address the question, so we can hear the statement.
Okay.
Thank you.
I've never concluded that a security guard was not in the budget. I think I pointed out that the office in question, there's, is ten feet away from the police station. You know, I regret the incident that occurred with an angry member of the public, but the police department is ten feet away, and I never concluded that a security guard was not in the budget.
Well, it took the police to lend them out of time to get to that department, even though the police department is only ten feet away. And also, there's not even a security camera installed to see a person that can actually commit a heinous crime. We say shootings are, they're public shootings, and, you know, for the city to allow that neglect and wait for something to happen and be reactive opposed to proactive, either it's because you don't find that this is an important issue. You have the money, obviously, because you gave him a position, you got, you got the money, obviously, because you gave him a position that was absolutely for eight years, and now it's all of a sudden implemented, maybe it's because, is it a mayoral election year that we're switching positions? Or is it because it's total neglect? Because there should be at least a camera there. There should be, I gave adamant amount of qualified people that can, to create a position, I think that that should be more priority, community safety in your administration, your public workers' safety should be at first.
And I remember, Mr. Pedman, that I asked about the protocol when it turns off, a situation like it happened, there's, there's all the factors that contribute, that if there's a protocol, it turns off what employees, what is the process to follow?
The, in that situation, there's, to reach out for your immediate supervisor as quick as you can, there was a, an alarm system, a buzzer at the desk, which was apparently disconnected, I was not aware of that, I've been, Glenn Patterson has advised me that that matter has been resolved, that should someone be in a panic situation, they can press the buzzer, and it will notify anyone within that department that there's an issue, and that someone should come to the front desk and the aid of the people there. I reject the idea that we don't care about employee safety. I don't, I don't believe that, that argument at all.
Well, in that situation, show me evidence that you built...
I responded the next day, I met with your wife, and I called the police department, and I said, the next time someone calls from that desk, how about someone from inside the building come across and assist the individual instead of calling a patrol car? That took three minutes to arrive.
So, in the sense, I just wanted a...
All right, well, quick, do you know, did anyone contact, no, no, he spoke to me.
No, 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 I just want, Mr. Pedman, you have a few more seconds of the five minutes, I just wanted to make that work, I'm just, I'm just wanting to go there.
I'm gonna continue, continue, continue.
Well, when I tell you, no, 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 when I tell you that they find yourself...
Show, show me, show, show me a writing, that that's...
I have, I'm just telling you...
When, when, when you, did anyone from that department contact that individual that came in in a threatening manner? Then you're just saying that there's not...
I don't know the answer to that.
Can Captain Miller ask, answer that question?
I don't know if you see...
I couldn't hear what he said.
If the individual was contacted, the person that did, going into the office building.
I don't understand what you're saying.
He's talking about an incident...
I understand the incident, but I, first, you said the person was contacted about the building, I don't understand.
No, no, that went in, that did that, that familiar that, by the police department. Was he...
I'm sorry. There's a situation, here's where the neglect is, you know, and this is just my first question, I have a number issue I need to address.
So let's, let's finish, so that way you just give a chance to somebody else and they go back.
Here's, here's the situation, you know, we sat with Captain Miller and Sergeant Dominguez. We viewed the videotape, we didn't agree with it. We seen obvious neglect within the officers. It didn't seem like it was a, a situation of urgency. And Captain Miller and Sergeant Dominguez recommended that me and my wife, if you're not satisfied with what you see, or with the results of the Internal Affairs Unit, please, you can kindly go upstairs to the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office. Me and my wife got up, went up the stairs to the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office. When we went to the front desk, we got into altercation, because the lady at the front desk said that we, the New Brunswick Police Department knows that they're not to send people up here to file complaints, go back downstairs. So we got into an actual argument, where prosecutor officers had to come out and address me and my wife. So my question is, why, why is he sending people up there if, if that's the solution, knowing that they don't agree with us coming up there?
Okay, we will answer that question as soon as we give another opportunity to know, because you are over the five minutes, Mr. Pedman. Thank you, next.
Okay, like I was saying...
I told you already, Mr. Pedman, that you have to come back after the five minutes, and I'm, I'm just telling you, I'm already telling you.
Huh?
Somebody's there behind you, I already told you, you have the five minutes, so please, go back on the line, and we will answer that questions for you.
How many minutes did I go? Because you allow...
It's right here, it was more than, it was, it was just so...
I said, I said, I put up the person, but the person before me went about eleven minutes. Nobody stopped.
I have a timer right here.
How long, how long did the person before me go?
Miss, the person before you went five minutes, that's why I was telling you five minutes, and you went over five minutes, and I've been looking, because Mr. Theresa has it right here.
All right.
Thank you.
Once again, my name is Dani Amor, two eleven Joyce Comer. Normally I don't come up a second time, but due to where I never got a chance to finish my situation with crossing guards, to get an answer from the city and Captain Miller. First, would you please tell me how much a crossing guard is paid an hour?
I don't have that answer. Captain, do you know how much it is?
It depends on how long they work for the city.
Because at this rate, like I said, my advice that I got from Officer Savage yesterday, when he's telling me, you're very short of crossing guards, where I believe it's close to what, maybe fifteen, between ten and fifteen dollars an hour, where I believe that's more of a person out there standing risking their, risking their life, that they should be paid more, and maybe you would get some younger ones out there, instead of maybe people who are disabled, retired, where you won't be counting on them, nobody can't say if you're gonna be sick or not, but you know, if you're disabled, you're gonna be, you're a doctor person, that's one reason why I, I like the job, but I wouldn't go back, due to where I don't know where my back is gonna go or what, if you understand what I'm saying, where how about you raise the price of how much a crossing guard get paid an hour, due to where he said that seven crossing guards were out Monday, and that he, he can only allow seven police officers by law to come out and cover each one, and he said he has to choose which one he thinks is the, the most dangerous, which street, where he showed me on paper stating that, okay, Sedan is much dangerous than Joyce, Joyce Comer. How, how can you really say that, due to where, like I just told you, how many accidents are on Joyce Comer, what, a little boy, what was it, last year or the year before, got hit by a car right there, Joyce Comer, Comstock? So how can you ju, you judge really what street is more dangerous than another, other than what happened, the records of what happens on a street?
Mr. Pedman, did you talk, did you ask that to your officer?
I'm, I'm explaining to you what Officer Savage said to me yesterday, yes, yes.
I understand, did you ask, you know, did you talk to him about what would be, what are your impressions of that, what you have, what you feel about that, that you think that...
He, he explained to me, but like, I'm, I'm taking it to the city and to Captain, please tell me, how can you judge which street is more dangerous? What is your way of judging which street is more dangerous than another?
Captain, do you know how the, the decision is made when the crossing guards are not there, and where to place the officers, and what interception?
I don't know, I can't speak specifically that day, but in general, there is no law saying maybe you can have seven officers, maybe if we only had seven officers available at that time, I think that's probably more cohesive to what happened that day. And it'd be officer's experience of where they think at that moment the officers need to go, if that's what we have available.
Like I told you, if you would show proof, I showed you how many times I, from morning to, to afternoon, where I called the police department, and then how he didn't take it seriously, whoever were, I can't remember his name, the names and all, didn't take it serious, oh, you don't need a crossing guard there, you have a crossing guard on the corner of Joyce Comer and Delavan. Joyce Comer and Delavan, that's for Livingston School, it's personally Joyce Comer and Comstock, where you have four buses with, so that's what, almost a hundred and twenty little students that gets off there on the, on the parking lot now, the bus stop, due to where with the park work and all, where it was changed, and you're gonna tell me that you do not need an officer there? That that, please, like I said, I, I, I know, I know she's sick, but what I'm saying, come on, have, have some backup, some, some, somehow. I'm not putting on anything against her, because she knows how I checked on her, how she's doing and everything, and she told me that she called, and what, no one ever sent anyone for the whole entire last week, or, or on Monday and Tuesday. So please, I, I hope you look into it to show you that Joyce Comer is a very dangerous street, a, a, a street, due to where I show you the proof.
I have, you can leave me there, yeah.
So, 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 please, take, take, do, do something to take it seriously.
Thank you.
And then he also mentioned, which I think is a very good idea, where he, he was talking about having a mo, a couple of mobile crossing guards, where he, how he said, okay, okay, if this runs out, if this crossing guard is out on Joyce Comer and Comstock, how it'll be a person to cover, be able to move, move wherever is needed, if you understand what I'm trying to say. But please, take it seriously that Joyce Comer, it, I've been there thirty-seven years, all my life, Joyce Comer is getting to be very seriously, I hope you put an officer there one day, which you don't see too much of with these new officers, because they don't live here, they don't care, how they used to sit on the corners, wow, catch them boys, the loud motors, but please, do something.
Thank you, Mr. Pedman.
Good evening once again, Charles Cradville, two quick questions. I wanted to ask, the first one is, might sound a little silly, but it is substantive. The, one of the nice things about my neighborhood is there's a lot of small businesses, and there's a few less now, that the grease trucks are no longer where they are, there's been some research into it, it shows the trucks, that the small businesses are not doing nearly as well as they used to in the old spot, and I wanted to ask the city, you know, how they feel about that, and what was done to those folks who had been really invested in the community and been there for a long time.
I see, that's, of course, I see them around now, they're always packed, because that's one of my houses, that I see. But Mr. Pedman, we have, the city has a statement, and I haven't, I haven't seen this, so we haven't seen them before, that you told them also, I can't even, other than that.
I'm sorry, I don't have an answer to that, I think Glenn Patterson probably has a little more insight into the movement of the grease trucks and how well they're doing, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer.
Okay. And the last one is a little more philosophical, but I think it's an issue that could really affect New Brunswick. There's been talk of allowing undocumented immigrants to obtain driver's licenses in New Jersey, and I wanted to ask each of the council members how they feel about that, if they think that's something that would be beneficial for their constituents here in the up city.
The same, I don't have anything to say at this time on that, until I do more research on it, but thank you.
Well, I know that the Star Ledger has endorsed it, and it certainly seems like something that would be beneficial here, so we can, folks...
You know, they stay fused up.
Well, maybe there's a lot, there's a lot of people driving around that don't have, you know, any, any type of paperwork, insurance, those kinds of things, it'd be better if folks were able to get into that system since, if they're here in town, so I suggest we'll get to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My last question, what do I, I don't even want, no, 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 I don't want, I don't want Captain Miller to respond. Wait, no, I don't even want him to respond. As a matter of fact, no. Captain Miller, as far as the New Brunswick Police Department goes, I'm gonna give the New Brunswick Police Department five months. I'm not gonna come in here and mention out one question about the police department. I'm not, you know, so the New Brunswick Police Department got full reign, whatever they want, and I'm quite sure they won't shoot nobody, because it's a mayoral election that year, so I'm pretty sure they're not gonna kill anybody this year. But I'll give them full reign, I'm not gonna ask a police question for five months. What I'll do is I'll focus on the administration and also education, you know. First, and foremost, I wanna ask the question, I'll start with this, because, I guess the city, I don't drink Kool-Aid, I don't sip the Kool-Aid, I don't care how good you might present it. I'm gonna focus on, I have a few questions for the breakfast before the bell program. I understand it was implemented, patterned after a school in Newark, if I'm not mistaken? The program was patterned after a school in Newark, North Newark, by a lady named Tanya Riggins, if I'm not mistaken, in two thousand and four? You guys are praising the program that you know nothing about?
I know, and that's why, and the program is in the city. It's breakfast after the bell.
Same program that was implemented in Newark in two thousand and four.
Let's, let's get this one by one. So the five minutes are stopped. Mr. Pedman, if you have a...
Keith Jones is here, who has the specifics on the program, and...
Mr. Jones, since you are...
Yes, yes, the program is well over ten years old, based out of Newark, federally funded program.
Okay. A question is, what, why did New Brunswick decide to pattern, it's good to give kids breakfast. I understand conflicts and what it down there is okay, but my question is, you pattern a program after a school that's not, because either, either the program is directed towards poverty, or is directed towards academics, and I'd like to know which one is this program basically directed for? Is it to give kids breakfast because they are hungry in the morning, or is it to give kids breakfast because it'll be academically beneficial for them?
Well, I think that both of the, it would be both, because there's some children that, even though there's breakfast offer, it's very early, in the morning, sometimes they don't get there on time. So, and you know that research says that breakfast and the first meal is the most important meal of the day for those kids, so I don't think it has, it has a benefit for both, it's just, you know, so let's, I guess, I mean, you know, whether it's one thing or the other, I think that would be a benefit to our kids. Plus, the good thing about it that I like is the fact that the kids are able to eat together in the classroom, they get to talk, you know, with their peers, the teacher is there, everybody's there, it's in a place a little bit more like home, family.
Okay, all right, let's deal with the academic aspect of it. Okay, the breakfast program after the bell, you looked at Newark, said they're doing a breakfast program after the bell, and it's successful, and so we're implementing it in New Brunswick. But my question is, how is that deemed a success? Newark came, is ranked five hundred and twelve out of five hundred and fifty-eight schools in the state. So why would you look at a school that's five hundred and, coming in five hundred and twelve place, and out of five hundred and fifty-eight schools, you look and say, you know what, I see what Newark is doing, let's implement it, they did this ten years ago, they implemented this program ten years ago, that was two thousand and fourteen, and we look and say, you know what, since they failed, let's pattern a program after them, if this is, if it's academics. So that's proof that this program might not work purely in academics. Let's look at the poverty aspect of it, okay? You have kids that obviously hadn't been eating breakfast, they hadn't been eating breakfast for decades, to take ten years to implement this program. It obviously been a, a form of neglect within the city to actually implement a program this late. Now, I looked at pictures, and I seen, I seen the mayor sitting down with the children, you know, with the breakfast. And he didn't, I mean, I'll give it to you, he didn't sit in McKinley School where the kids got poisoned, he was more smart to do that. I didn't sit at Red Shaw School where he's on contaminated grass, he went to Carrot School. He sat down with the children to eat breakfast, okay? Now, if it's a poverty issue, he's getting paid a salary and a pension and sitting down with children, knowing that they can, that under his leadership, they can't even afford to eat. So that's a total contradiction. He gets paid a salary and a pension to sit down with children that he know in his city, and it's not like this is implemented after a new mayor, a new mayor didn't come in here and implement this program. We had this mayor for twenty-some-odd years. So now, after twenty-some-odd years of neglect, someone implements a program, he goes after he made it feasible for him to get a pension and a salary, and sit down with children and eat breakfast in a program that he know he's responsible, responsible for them being poverty-stricken. Please explain that to me.
Mr. Pedman, you're incorrect in saying that this is, the kids get breakfast every morning, this is just something...
No, but you said it's a poverty issue, you said, I asked you specifically, I asked you specifically what this program designed for, to target poverty.
What I'm trying to tell you is, that you made an incorrect statement by saying that the kids... statement by saying that the kids don't get breakfast, the kids get breakfast even before this program was implemented, so that's what I'm trying to correct you, there is breakfast at school that is served very early in the morning for the kids, for the parents that, uh, of the kids, it's very early, it's at seven, seven thirty, so there's breakfast, this is not something that we, that a mayor decided to do later on, for whatever reason, but there's breakfast served in the, in the school system, because my daughter, because my sister, she got breakfast, so, I just wanted to correct that statement.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not...
If, I'm going to, um, Councilwoman Garladi, if you, um, say some statement in terms of the...
Yes, thank you, um, Council President, I just want to point out that, um, emulating a lot of programs, uh, is just one aspect of this program, uh, there has been additional research in the course of the last ten years, conducted by the federal government, demonstrating the value of this program, and, um, I will also point out that the students that participated in this program ten years ago in the city of Newark are not the pro- people who are being measured for their success by the current data that's being collected about the children who are in the school now, um, I, I want to finally say, in addition to all of that, that it's nice to be able to say positive things about a good program, and that is what is being stated here, and I'm sorry that some people don't see the value of the program, and so therefore feel the need to put it down in a appropriate way.
No, I'm not putting down a publicity stunt, that's what, I'm not going to support a publicity stunt, if this, if this, there's many programs that are deemed effective all around you, South Brunswick has effective programs, Holland Park, which is a better school ranking, Holland Park has better programs, which is a better school ranking, East Brunswick has better programs, which is a better school ranking, Woodtoucheen has better programs, which is a better school ranking, Edison has better programs, which is a better school ranking, name the program that you emulated from them that's deemed success, from a successful school, name of, that you're not just going to contribute to addict school programs, I named about twelve schools right close in your area that you're not bragging about deeming a program to, they have athletic programs, every, I, you go to any school surrounding this area, their gyms are open after school, New Brunswick gyms are shut down, so there's a lot of programs you can emulate, I think this is the publicity stunt, it's good pressure for the mayor, because it's the mayor election year, I think it's good photo opportunities, but I don't think you serving kids cornflakes and water and saying that that'll get them into college, is, 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 I think it's an assault to the public intelligence.
Thank you.
Because you said, no, I'm not finished.
You're five minutes out, thank you so much.
I'm not finished, and I also...
But I also, because you're five minutes out, thank you so much.
Okay, I'll, I'll come back.
Keith Jones, for the sake of driving, I'm not going to address any of that, I'm going to, I'm going to speak on the actual program itself, so, with the implementation of Breakfast After the Bell, starting March seventeenth, we are now, uh, providing access to breakfast for over five thousand kids, K through eight, which is historic in the city of New Brunswick, yes, it was a program started in Newark, uh, we based our program off the charter school, uh, in New Brunswick, who's been doing it for five years, uh, North Brunswick has been doing it for five years, so we are emu- emulating, uh, a city with some programming that we like, it's not the end-all, be-all to kids becoming, uh, more successful in school, it's just one of those challenges that stops kids from, uh, from learning, you can't concentrate if you, if you have to eat in the middle, uh, you can't focus, teachers are spending two hundred dollars a month to, uh, provide snacks for kids who, you know, haven't eaten since lunch the previous day, uh, there's always been breakfast in our school system, now it's just after the bell, so now kids eat together as well as the teacher, uh, it's a fifteen-minute process, very simple, very easy, uh, Lay Sixty also sponsored the bags, the toasts, the toasts get delivered to the classrooms, the kids eat, gives the teacher time to cover lesson plans, take attendance, kids eat together, at the press conference, the question was asked, how many of you eat breakfast at home, uh, or were eating breakfast at home for this program, three hands went up out of twenty-two kids, you know, so, that in itself was, I open, just to show you how, how serious the situation is, uh, naturally, kids are more poor than, uh, in, in poverty more than adults, so, everything from housing to, uh, food especially, that, that affects overall performance, you know, so, um, that's the goal here, the goal here was just to provide another bre- another meal for these kids, give them an even playing field, cut the stigma of kids that are on reduced lunch or some type of assistance, part of that reason why they want to eat breakfast is because of that stigma, they didn't want to feel like, you know, I'm the kid on assistance, so I'm not going to eat this breakfast, even though I'm starving, so we totally leveled the playing field, it's a federally funded program, uh, it's actually in legislation now, it's, the Senate Education Committee has it right now, it's going to go before Senate, and it's going to be, uh, they're trying to require all schools within the state of New Jersey to adopt this program, even the, you know, more affluent schools, you know, so this would be a statewide program, I think it's great that the city of New Brunswick has it, I think it's great that over five thousand kids are now have access to this, to this, uh, to these meals, and I think this is something to be proud of, I think this is something for, for everybody to play a part in, and speaking of playing a part in, um, the reason why I'm up here is because the New Brunswick Community Food Alliance, along with the city and the public, uh, school, we're starting a campaign, so this campaign will be an awareness campaign for Breakfast After the Bell to, for houses of worship, different organizations, uh, parents and any other groups, you know, who want to know more about Breakfast After the Bell, how they can encourage, uh, their children to participate, is at no cost to the parents, uh, just over the weekend, we got support from the Middlesex County Black Democratic Caucus, uh, several Woodtoucheen branch, uh, N double A C branch, N double A C P branches, for houses of worship, that will be delivered to Senate on behalf of New Brunswick, we support the New Brunswick Breakfast After the Bell initiative, we thank them for doing this, by the way, so, we're making a lot of noise, this is a great initiative, anybody who wants to join the campaign, please let me know, you can sign up on our website at, uh, uh, W W W N B F U dot org, uh, while I'm up here, let me just switch hats real quick, I'm also the communications, uh, uh, community outreach coordinator for Ziclobia, so if anybody wants me to do a presentation at your house of worship, different organization, I'm available, I'm also hiring, so I have six spaces to fill, uh, so, uh, I'll stay a little while after the council meeting, give my information, I've got about twenty seconds left.
You have just three minutes, three to nine, so you still have...
I'm good, okay, let me stand soon, I'm gonna, no, we, uh, I just want to also thank, uh, Mister Marashia for coming to our Food Alliance meeting, uh, this week to speak on the water department and equality and some of the changes that, that has been going on, and we discussed in brief about, uh, you know, ways that we could look at collaborating or doing some joint efforts with the New Brunswick Community Food Alliance and the Water Department, so we'll be working on that, so that'll be happening soon, and also our community gardens are open, so, you guys want to, you know, bed in the city of New Brunswick, grow vegetables, grow your own produce, you can s- you know, don't sell it, you can eat it, you can give it away, you know, it's always great to see, you know, you know, kids and families, you know, get into the gardens and children, you know, grow their first vegetables, you know, so, with that being said, uh, I'm super excited about Breakfast After the Bell, this is a program that we've been working on for a number of years, it wasn't a quick sign-off, this has been constant, 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 uh, work and pressure and, you know, dealing with different schools and getting their information, so, I'm, I'm proud, everybody in this room should be proud, we, we did a great thing, everybody, there's way too many names to, to mention that played a role in this, and, uh, that, I mean, there's nothing else to say, but, you know, let's keep moving on forward from here, and, you know, that's that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman.
Tormel Pittman, ten one six, New Brunswick. Okay, first off, let me say this, I don't want to get into it, I don't have any think, I don't have a problem with the Breakfast After the Bell program, my problem is the intent, a lot of programs that can be effective should be implemented, just look at New Brunswick High School, all the money you spent, all the money was spent for the high school, you got a new high school, a brand new start, don't, you know, it's not good to say anything bad about the New Brunswick High School, we're doing a great thing, these kids are failed, these kids are ranked five hundred and thirty-seven out of fifty, five hundred and fifty-eight schools in the dish, in the state of New Jersey, so when I sit here and I see program, and like I said, I don't have a problem with the bre- you can ask the mayor, Mayor Kaye, and you can ask, uh, Kevin, um, Kevin Jones, I, the first time the mayor said, I always, I always set people up, I always ask, uh, when can I speak with the mayor, when can I speak with Mr. Marashia, I always say, he don't want to talk to you, I've met with the mayor before, back in two thousand and eleven, I sat down with the mayor, with, guess what, with, and you can Google my name, you can go on YouTube and push in Tormel Pittman, it's two thousand and eleven it popped up, how I explained the situation with the mayor, I sat down with him, I, I implemented, this isn't, you're right, this isn't an original idea, I implemented a program about the br- getting children breakfast in New Brunswick, the mayor sat down with me, he said it's a fabulous idea, Tormel Pittman, that maybe, maybe he didn't follow through it because I had a Yankees hat on, but he says it's a fabulous idea, he contacted Kevin Jones, said this is a great idea, but he fell through with it, that's, and this is two thousand and eleven, back in July, this is before Barry Jolosh got killed, this was before all of that, and I was, so I'm not against the breakfast program, my thing is, I know that how the city don't have any valid concern about the children, so any program, I have to be suspect about, do you understand, look at the difference what happened in Edison, we had a kid that, we had students that had a school that burned down, and what the, what the mayor did, and what the city of Edison did was, grab those kids together and put them in Middlesex County College, and the day that they walked in, it was exactly like the school that was burned down, now we come off, look at that, look what, look what the mayor of New Brunswick did, a situation happened with the school, he put them in the warehouse, now, making decisions like that, did he contact Edison and say, hey, listen, wait, I got a better idea than Middlesex County College, how about you get one of these warehouses in Jersey Avenue where I got my kids at, when he would sit down with the kids at a breakfast program and act like he agrees with it, I don't drink the Kool-Aid, I don't drink the Kool-Aid, and I don't come in and play, like I said, being that you guys, you know, in a lack of respect and thing, you, you guys are pulling all of your guns out because it's the mayor election year, what am I, I told you guys I'll be opening that, and you know what I'm going to do, I'm going to be a spokesman, I never solicit when I come here, I come with concerns, but I'm gonna solicit, if anybody in the city, that you want to play, I'm going to play hardball now, every time I come in here, I'm giving you five months, I'm not going to mention police at all, but anybody who want to come in here, anybody who works for the city of New Brunswick, and have a valid concern, are mistreated, and don't want to, and want somebody to speak on their behalf, and don't want to lose their job, and not be reprimanded because they have an independent opinion, and not going with the status quo, they can contact Tormel Pittman, and I'll be their voice, and I promise you, I'll make sure that that, that their names never be mentioned, you know, no, I'm not finished, not finished, okay, okay, but I'm just saying, because I'm sick of the neglect, you know, and people think, a lot of you guys think that, I know I get the bad breath, because I say what people don't want to say, I, I'm not a paid spokesman, or a paid puppy, you know, and a lot of times, you know, I do, I, I, I do do good things, like the mayor, you know, um, there was a situation that happened, a lot of you guys think that people around you that don't like me, and people around me that don't like you, I, I, I got a lot more friends around you guys than you believe, you know, I got a lot more friends around you guys than you believe, there's a situation where, I'm going to explain this and we're going to leave this alone, there's a situation where the mayor's daughter was getting married, okay, and I got a phone call from somebody close to you guys, they told me the time, the date, the place, the church, the reception, and everything, they told me, it's Tormel, go up there with the bullhorn and the protest and embarrass them, and someone close to you guys, there's no way I could have found out what time his daughter was getting married, what church it was at, or where the reception was, there's no way I could have got that information, but you know what hap- what stopped me, I, my, the person that you guys neglected is to secure, and at front desk, my wife, she told me, what would, what would happen if someone was to do that to your daughter, don't go up there, don't do that, but I'm saying, I'm telling you, that I do get private information that I hold back on, and I'm giving it, I'm giving the police department five months, I'm not going to mention it, and every time I step in, there's going to be administrative questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman. Second, Russell.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Hi.
Council President Escobar.